And then we'll get around to hearing the new cases. So the opening statement goes as follows. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on Wednesday, the 24th of October, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the complex and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, the Trenton Times, the Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey Incorporated. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Could you go through the roll call for us, please, Claudia?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Valvallings?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Lombrose? Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So we need to review and approve some of the documents that were circulated to us. The first one being the minutes for the 22nd of August, is that right? If you have any changes that are required to these at this time, we should make them. If not, a motion to approve is presented and a second to that motion is the right thing to do.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Can you call the roll for us? I guess.
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, the first of the resolutions is 374 Cherry Hill Road, which carries the file This again was circulated. We should make any needed changes. If not, a motion to approve is presented as appropriate.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, I guess only those of us who voted in the affirmative can do it. So would you call the roll for us?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yeah.
The next one is 338 Nassau Street, which carries the case number Z1818-566. Are there any changes or comments needed on this? If not, a motion to approve and a second.
I'll approve it.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yeah.
Okay. So... And we... I'm getting confused. Did we just vote on 20 Green Street?
No. That's next.
Okay. I'm sorry. I put it on the done file rather than on the to-do file. This is the same thing. It was circulated. Any changes we need to make should be made now. Any comments? If not, an approval and a second. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll vote to approve.
We have a motion to approve, a second.
I'll second.
And we have a second. So could you call the...
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we come to the business of the evening.
And the first case, is it really 3 and 1? No, it's 3 and 1/2 Madison Street with the case number Z1818-604. Is there anyone here for that case? Would you come forward and be at the desk? And I'll get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record and then ask you to present your case.
Thank you.
Are you going to need the computer working?
I am not going to...
You're not going to show a slide?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So, Mr. Bridger?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Your testimony this evening will be truthful. Yes, I do. Thank you. Good evening. The applicant is Florian Fuser, the owner of 3 and 1/2 Madison Street. He's requesting a hardship C1 variance and in the alternative a C2 to permit the construction of a rear deck and to install landscape pavers over most of the site in exception to the required building and impervious coverage requirements and as well as a smaller combined side yard and rear setbacks. Property is located in the R2 zone and is subject to the use and bulk regulations in accordance with 17A 254 and 258 of the former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. Subject lot is noncomplying with respect to the lot area requirement of 6,000 square feet. The existing lot area is 1,949 square feet. It's also noncomplying with respect to the required 60-foot lot area. The existing lot area is 24.88 square feet. And the subject property is noncomplying with respect to the smaller side yard. The requirement's eight. The existing is zero. And the combined side yard, the requirement's 20. The existing is 8.2. And the building coverage requirement is 30. Existing is 37.29. The applicant is proposing to construct a 4x10 rear deck landing to provide ingress egress from the rear of the house. The proposed deck will require a smaller side yard setback. Requirement is eight feet. The proposed is 1 and 1/2 feet. It will require a combined side yard setback. The requirement is 20 feet and the proposed is 8.66. Requires a rear yard setback variance. The required setback is 35. Existing is 20 and the proposed will be 15. And it also requires a building coverage variance requirement is 30%. The existing's 37 and the proposed is 40.29%. He's also asking for a variance from the impervious coverage to install landscape pavers along the side of the house as well as the rear yard of the property line. There's a variance in accordance with 17A 377F which requires paved areas other than such as are needed for access to the building on the lot shall not be located less than four feet from a lot line. The proposed pavers will run right to the property line with a zero setback variance as required. And then finally, there's a maximum impervious coverage requirement for this lot, which is 61%, 61 and 1/2%. The existing is 45.79. The proposed will be 88.52%. Property is in a suggested historic district. However, the Historic Preservation Commission looked at it and they did not have any issues with the project. He's applied for both a C1 and a C2 variance. I'd be glad to answer any questions. In terms of the impervious coverage variance, I visited the site with Jack West, the land use engineer, and he would suggest if the board's inclined to approve the application that a stormwater management plan be a condition of approval and that the existing sump pump at the back of the house be directed to the front of the house so that it drains into the storm sewer system. And that's my report.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger? Okay, thank you. So if you would care to make your case?
Mr. Floyd, before you begin, and I should have noted earlier, the board has jurisdiction. You're noticing is in order. And I'm just going to swear you in tonight. If you would raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to...
Talk into the...
This better? Okay. I'm here to answer, of course, any questions. Let me start by introducing myself. My name is Florian Fuser. I'm relatively new to this town. I purchased the property in 2014 and currently this property is inhabited by my mother-in-law. We are... We have rebuilt the inside of the property to some extent, to great extent, I should say. And part of this was the doing away with interior staircase to the basement, which now, in order to reclaim that interior space. Currently, the only way to the basement is through the outside, through the backyard. The area of the backyard is currently dirt, ground, grass, overgrown. And we're looking to improve the usability and the manageability of this property and provide outdoor space that's meaningful for my mother-in-law. That goes further. We're attempting to provide an alternate egress from the building. Currently, there's only one, the front entrance, which we did not alter because of the historic nature of the house. It's also a duplex with a neighboring unit being identical, mirror identical facade. So we left the front door intact. Would like for safety and usability reasons to have a rear egress, which we would like to combine with a small deck, more terrace, and stairs down to grade level. The first floor level is about 64, between 58 and 64 inches above grade. And we would need to construct this wooden deck with about eight stairs down to grade level. This is the proposed construction portion, the impervious coverage. I would like to say that the grade there, the outdoor space, is located at the lowest possible point in the neighborhood, immediately adjacent to the tunnelled brook that goes, Harry's Brook, that is covered there and which results in rainwater basically flooding
them out to a storm sewer?
the area every time and turning the backyard into somewhat of a mud area, which for days at a time makes the backyard unwalkable. The roof does not have a gutter. We intend to cover the area with semi-permeable brick pavers based on overgravel so we have The roofs basically drain right off the edge. The house is built in 1906. They only... I don't know why they did not have gutters. some absorption of rainwater. There is... Only the front porch has gutters. However, something that dries quicker than the clay and mud that is currently there. So it basically distributes across the length of the house.
I see.
I hope this describes our intent to some degree.
And you're putting a rear staircase or steps up.
I'm obviously ready to answer any questions on concerns.
That will be lighted? It will have... So that at nighttime people can go up and down and use it or...
Yeah, there's lighting actually already installed, outdoor lighting. The construction, the extent of the construction will be either pressure-treated timber or rot-resistant hardwood stairs up to the deck. So it is a fairly standard outdoor construction. I believe I have a line drawing in the material. Unfortunately, I don't have a printout.
I have a question about your access to the basement. Are you going to need to build out then a retaining wall or a stair or something to get down to that basement door? Or this is all that you need to... It seems like you're covering that and I'm not picturing how you're getting down.
Yes, the basement door is in the center of the rear wall of the house. It's currently, and I should have explained in more detail, currently the dirt ground of the backyard is sloping towards the rear entrance. There's no stairs per se. So our proposal is to have the pavers slope slightly away from the building and construct a well with stairs down instead of a mud ramp, which is basically in place now. The door is actually centered under the deck and we're looking to have the stairs allow for enough headroom to be able to get in and out from underneath the deck.
Okay.
One other question from the board? Does anyone in the audience wish to address this case? Could you come forward? There's a microphone on the lectern. I'm not sure whether it's turned on, but there should be a switch on the side.
Can you... I think it works now.
Seems to.
Okay.
So you'll have to be sworn in by...
Okay.
Sir, would you first state your name and address?
Steve Gilbert, G.I.L.B.E.R.T., 7 Madison.
And, sir, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I live at 7 Madison. I'm two doors down from this house and I'm here to support the application. I... My property not only is two doors down, but I have a lot and a half. So I actually touch Florian's property just slightly in the rear. And I feel what he's proposing is perfectly acceptable. In fact, I think it's an improvement, a big improvement, not just to his house, but for the immediate houses in the neighborhood. As Florian said, you know, there are some issues there with runoff and I've witnessed what he's gone through with flooded basement. And I think what he's proposing makes a lot of sense in terms of being able to shunt the water away from the foundation. But I think he's put a... Done a lot of work into that house already and has done very nice work and quality-wise. I like the proposed design and so I'm here to support it. I think it would be great.
Good. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to... You do?
I do.
Same procedure.
Am I on? Yes, I am. Richard Ryan, REIN, the owner of the property at 8 Branch Alley, which is directly abuts Florian's property.
Mr. Ryan, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm also here in support of the project. I think it's a... I second what Steve just said. I am concerned, we're all concerned about runoff and I think the stormwater management is something that should be addressed. And I wonder if even semi-impervious pavers need to go right up against the property line in the back. And it occurs to me that 18 inches or 24 inches of real earth with some ground cover perhaps just to create a nice border and also stay away from the tree roots that are going to be right there by the fence would be good both for the tree and also good for stormwater management. But I'm a supporter.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other people? Okay. So what is your pleasure?
Mr. Bridger, is there specific language that you'd like us to include if we want to include the stormwater management recommendation that you're suggesting?
You approve as requested.
No, sir. I'm asking Mr. Bridger if there's specific language that he wants us to include regarding the stormwater management.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I understand.
I would have that as a condition of approval, that a stormwater management plan be presented to the land use engineer for a review and consultation in the site. And I don't know if there's any other conditions, how you feel about what your neighbor said about moving the pavers back from the property line?
We would normally condition an approval with no runoff into neighboring property. And exterior lighting, again, in a fairly densely populated area is another of my bet noah. And we would, if you put lighting on the staircase and things like that, the light source shouldn't be visible off your property line and light shouldn't spill from whatever light fitting you put up there over your property line. Those would be two conditions that I would want to add to any approval we...
Yeah, that is understood. That is not a problem. I also to address the concern with tree roots and having impervious pavers up to the neighboring property. We do intend to leave a green strip. There are currently... There's one tree on our property which we intend to keep intact and roots of the neighbor's mulberry tree that we also intend to keep healthy. So there will be at least 24 inches of open ground. That being said, I believe that because of the nature of the soil, the drainage and absorption capability of brick pavers over a gravel bed would be better than the current clay soil.
Okay. Thank you. So we go into executive session and make a decision? Is that okay? All right. So where do we want to go? Do we want to approve with the conditions or... If so, then we need a motion to do that. You guys...
I move that we approve the application with the conditions stated.
And a question, Mr. Schreiber and the rest of the board members, as a C1, which you remember is a hardship due to dimensions of the lot, topography of the lot, or C2, which is, say, just better zoning, fulfilling other purposes of zoning. Which do you think...
I would have thought of C1. What do we need to do?
C1?
Is there a second for the motion?
I second.
So we have a motion and a second. Could you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes. I assume it's submission of a stormwater plan acceptable to the engineer. Just... Okay.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's approved.
I had 31. Lidle Street is the next one, but I understand that we're holding that application until a meeting in the future. So the next case we should hear is 50 Princeton Avenue and it carries the case number Z1818-632. So if you come forward and be comfortable at the desk.
I can speak here.
And I will get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memo into the record. And I assume all of the paperwork is in the board's jurisdiction.
It is, and the board has jurisdiction. Good evening. Thank you. Francis Zeitler is the owner and the applicant of 50 Princeton Avenue, seeking a floor area D4 variance to permit an addition to an existing single-family house. Additional C1 variances are requested for building coverage, required height to setback ratio, smaller and combined side yard setbacks and accessory structure setbacks. Property is located in the R2 zone in the former borough and is subject to the use of bulk regulations in accordance with 17A 239 and 240. It's... Subject property is noncomplying with respect to the required 10,000 square foot lot area. Existing lot is 8,595 square feet. It's also noncomplying with respect to the 75-foot lot width requirement. The existing lot is 64.6. And then the subject property itself is noncompliant with respect to the smaller side yard requirement of 10. The existing is 4. It's not complying with a combined side yard requirement of 25. The existing is 20.1 feet. It's not complying with respect to the accessory structure setback. The requirement's five and it's 2.8 on the rear and 2.9 feet on the side. And it's not complying with respect to the 25% building coverage requirement. The existing is 28.5. It's not compliant with respect to the building height to setback. The requirement's 2.1 and the existing is 2.9, 3 to 1. The applicant is proposing to construct approximately a 900-square-foot, one-story addition to the rear elevation of the existing house. The addition will provide for a new expanded kitchen dining room, family room, and a new master bedroom, which will allow the owners to age and place. The applicant is also proposing two air conditioners and a generator along the eastern property line. A floor area ratio variance is required. Maximum permitted floor area in the R2, which is a proportional FAR is 34.2. And the proposed FAR... Good evening. Thank you. Francis Seidler is the owner and the applicant of 50 Princeton Avenue, seeking a floor area D4 variance to permit the addition, an addition to an existing single family house. Additional C1 variances are requested for building coverage, required height to setback ratio, smaller and combined side yard setbacks and accessory structure setbacks. Property is located in the R2 zone in the former borough and is subject to the use of bulk regulations in accordance with 17A 239 and 240. It's, subject property is non-compliant with respect to the required 10,000 square foot lot area. Existing lot is 8,595 square feet. It's also non-compliant with respect to the 75-foot lot width requirement. The existing lot is 64.6. And then the subject property itself is non-compliant with respect to the smaller side yard requirement of 10. The existing is 4. It's not complying with the combined side yard requirement of 25. The existing is 20.1 feet. It's not complying with respect to the accessory structure setback. The requirement's 5 and it's 2.8 on the rear and 2.9 feet on the side. And it's not complying with respect to the 25% building coverage requirement. The existing is 28.5. It's not compliant with respect to the building height to setback. The requirement's 2.1 and the existing is 2.9, 3 to 1. The applicant is proposing to construct approximately a 900 square foot, one-story addition to the rear elevation of the existing house. The addition will provide for a new expanded kitchen dining room, family room, and a new master bedroom, which will allow the owners to age in place. The applicant is also proposing two air conditioners and a generator along the eastern property line. A floor area ratio variance is required. Maximum permitted floor area in the R2, which is a proportional FAR is 34.2 and the proposed FAR is 38.4. There's a number of bulk variances required. A smaller side yard setback, the requirement's 10, the proposed is 5. The combined side yard setback, the requirement's 25, the proposed is 15. And the building coverage requirement's 25% and proposed is 34.5%. And then the building height to setback ratio, the requirement's 2 to 1 and the proposed is 4.86 to 1. They are proposing an air conditioner and a generator at the rear of the property by the garage. Requirement, required setback is 4 feet. The proposed setback for the two air conditioners is 4 feet and 1.1 feet for the generator. And they've requested C1 consideration for the bulk variances. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have any questions? Good. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Christopher DeGresia from the law firm of Drinker, Biddle &amp; Wreath here on behalf of the applicant, Francis Seidler. Francis lives at 50 Princeton Avenue with her husband Fred Edelman. Francis has actually lived on this property since 1957, so she's been here for 61 years. And, still going strong. We're here tonight to request modifications to her home so that she'll be able to stay there. She's looking into the future. This is a neighborhood she's grown to love and is comfortable with and would like to remain here. When you take a look at their property and house, it pretty much has a traditional design. So, on the second floor, you have existing bedrooms. So she has to travel from the first floor to the second floor to get to her bedroom. And then from the first floor downstairs to the basement for the laundry. So on a day-to-day basis, she's going up and down those flights of stairs and it's getting more and more difficult for her. And as I said, she really loves the neighborhood. She's been in it for 61 years and it's something that she really doesn't want to have to leave. So she, she reached out to architect Richard Kahn to ask him for some help. And Richard has created a really nice design with a modest addition to the property and a redesign of the bottom floor that will create a living environment on the first floor. So it would have a bedroom, it would have a kitchen, it would have a living room, it would have a laundry room, and would allow her and her husband to live there because everything would be basically on the first floor. Unfortunately, the property is non-conforming and the structure's non-conforming. So pretty much anything you do is going to trigger a whole bunch of variances. The property itself is undersized by, you know, something like 2,500 square feet. It's narrow, so it doesn't meet the width requirement. And even more unique is its shape. So instead of a rectangle, when you take a look at the, the sides of the property, they don't run parallel, but they pitch in and eventually, you know, beyond the property line would eventually meet if they continued on. So it's a, it would almost be a rectangular shape. And that sort of has created a, a unique situation. It's also a corner lot, so when the house was originally built, it was built four feet from the prior, from the backyard, from the side yard rather, because it's a, it's a corner lot. So even if they were to add a foot, it would trigger all those side yard setbacks, whether it was the, you know, the side yard setback, the combined side yard setback, the building height ratio. And then when you have accessory structures, you have them up there as well. Again, they would be triggering all those variances. So although the list looks like there's a lot of variance, it's really a factor of both the size uniqueness of the property and the existing structures. But when you take a step back and take a look at it, you'll see that the size and scale, like you'll get to the elevations in a little bit, really fit into the neighborhood. It's not anything different than what you would see just walking down the street. So with that, I'd like to first introduce you to Francis. Francis, we'll have to have you sworn in. And you can sit there if you feel comfortable or here.
Ma'am, if you would raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
It will be.
Thank you.
It's hard to add anything after this excellent report, except that 15 years ago, I joined a community without walls in Princeton to assure seniors who can age in place. And I still belong there. They do that through friendship and help. But I need more than just their friendship. I need not to go down to the basement to my laundry and my office, which he left out. I have a small square, little office down there. I need to be able to live on one floor with my husband so that we can age in place, because I love this town. My children grew up here, went away, they come home, and I want to just be here, pay my taxes, go outside, meet my neighbors who I know very, very well. And in fact, some of them are here now to, I hope, say how, sure, that they love me. And so I hope you will approve my addition to my house. Thank you, Francis. Yeah, you can sit down. They have some questions. I don't know if you have any questions, but if not, we'd like to bring up our architect.
Why don't we hear your architect?
Richard, we'll have to have you sworn in and also.
Sure. My name's Richard Kahn.
Mr. Kahn, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
It is.
Thank you.
I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and in New York. I've been licensed for just under 30 years, member of the AA, lead accredited professional. I've sat on the zoning board for 10 years. I don't know.
We'd like to present him as an expert.
We will accept him.
Great. I'm going to go over to where the drawings are. The drawings that I'm going to present are actually the drawings, the drawings I'm going to present are the same drawings that you have here. I can mark them as exhibits if you want, but I just wanted to walk them, walk through them with everybody so they can see what we're doing. I was first approached by Fran and Fred in May of this year to discuss, as Fran said, the ability for her to age in place in her existing house. Her house was built in the 1920s. It's a traditional house with living room, kitchen on the first floor, and three bedrooms upstairs with one bathroom. So when we first looked at this, this request to make this age-friendly, we looked at several options of how we could do this. We looked at the ability to put in a chairlift along the stair, which I'll show you on the existing plans. We looked at the possibility of an elevator. We looked at lots of different things. But as we discussed them, there were still a number of intrinsic issues with the existing house. So for example, the bathroom, the master bathroom, well, it's only one bathroom on the second floor, is not ADA compliant. So turning radiuses, there's a tub in there, you know, so no roll-in shower, things like that would be very difficult as, you know, Fran and Fred would age. So we would have to redo the, the master, that one bathroom, which has space configuration or limitations. In addition, as Fran mentioned, the laundry room is in the basement, which presents challenges as well. And we tried to look to see, well, is there the ability to bring that upstairs as well? But again, it's three smaller bedrooms upstairs and we are limited on space and without, you know, pushing the envelope. And when we looked at the chairlift, the way that the existing stair is configured, it really became impossible for us to actually get that to work within, with the existing stair the way it is. So we then discussed the ability to create an addition. And one of the things that we looked at was the ability to create something that fit within the existing context, not to be something that was large in size. We looked at trying to keep this as just a, a simple one-story addition that would be able to provide a kitchen that was accessible, a family room, a master bedroom, a bathroom that would be accessible, a small area for Fran's desk. And the ability, as Fran and Fred recently were married, the ability to take Fred's furniture and things from his current or his previous apartment and move into the house. So as you can see, and as Chris mentioned, this is our property and you can see it's a truncated.
Do you have the number on?
Excuse me? This is on drawing A001. Do you want me to mark it as an exhibit?
Mark it as Exhibit A. It's the front sheet of our plan set, which is A001. Oh, I'm sorry, A's, yeah, A001.
Right. So, as you can see, we're on the corner of Princeton Avenue and in Patton Avenue. And you can see that this is not a right angle, which is causing the site to be truncated and tapered down towards the rear of the property, which has somewhat generated many of the non-compliant issues, either existing or proposed. And as you can see, the existing house is some, somewhat like this, and we are adding this back piece. What we've tried to do, so I'm going to move to A002, and I'll mark that A2. So this is the existing first floor. There's a large living space here, a sunroom, dining room, and a kitchen, which is very difficult should there become a point where wheelchair access was required. And then there's two steps up here and two steps here, which as we do this addition, we're trying to avoid that so that we have the ability to have wheelchair access from the garage direct into the, to the new addition. In the basement is the laundry as well. These are relatively steep steps here. And this is the existing stairs that take you up to this bathroom here on the second floor. So our proposed, our exist, these are the existing elevations. So you can see a two-story existing house.
So for the record, we're on A3, which is A003 of the plan set.
The front of the house on Princeton Avenue is not being touched. We are replacing windows, but the, essentially the, the, the house itself is remaining as is. When you look at the Patton and the neighboring site, majority of this will stay the same. We are taking off the back portion of the house where the kitchen is and part of the dining room, so that we are trying to minimize the new square footage. So this piece is coming off. A4, which is A004, shows the context of the, of the neighborhood. And just trying to show you, you know, when we look at, one of our requirements is, we're looking at a 10-foot side yard variance that we are asking for along Patton. So just to kind of show you, the, the existing houses that already are coming out to the, to the lot line here, these come out to that 10-foot mark already. So we're trying to be contextual and, and, and fit into the neighborhood. You can see some of the newer construction are three-story homes, which are one to two doors, two doors away. You can see much larger volumes than what we're proposing. You can see these, you know, two and a half story structures. A101, which will be Exhibit A5. So the idea was to try and take as much of the existing first floor for the new, you know, the, the new renovation as possible and to try and minimize what we're adding. The intent is that in the future, a caregiver and Fran's daughter possibly, or even granddaughter, would be able to live upstairs while Fran and Fred were able to live downstairs. And so create like an entry here for them while they have an entry. And when we go to the new plan, we'll show you. On the second floor, we're not doing anything except replacement of windows. This is basement plan, A6. And then the first floor. So we are creating this entry here so that Fran, Fran and Fred have the ability to come up here. This is where our 10-foot side yard variance we're requesting. There's no central air conditioning in the house today, so we are proposing two HVAC condensers out on the side. There is a roll-up generator today, but as Fran and Fred age, the intent is to provide a standby generator because, you know, for that, and then as we all know, Princeton is not a, a great place for us to keep our power most times. So we've tried to tuck the generator as far back as possible. The neighboring house ends around here, so trying to keep that out of view and noise from, from the neighbors and to block it from, with the existing garage and then the ability to come in here. So the, the design is to, you know, entry, master bedroom with a accessible bathroom, roll-in shower, and laundry all on the first floor with a walk-in closet that is accessible. Again, the master bedroom accessible, a dining space, and then a family room and kitchen. Again, all large accessibles, you know, clearances and aisles within the kitchen. And then if, if so desired, I'm sorry, this is A, was this six, I believe? Or is it seven? The ability that this could be closed off so that Fran and Fred could be here and then the caregiver could have access to this space and upstairs. The existing, the second floor, as we noted, no real changes other than, you know, window replacement. And this is A8. I think I might have missed. Okay. The proposed, this is A9, this is A401. So the front elevation maintaining the look on Princeton Avenue, the side elevation on Patton Avenue, keeping the existing house the way it is. Part of it has been removed, so we have our entry piece in here, which is essentially where Fran and Fred come in today. And trying to maintain this as a, you know, one-story here, architecturally trying to just break up the volume so it's not one long house, so creating these separate volumes along Patton Avenue and breaking down the scale. Kitchen looking out onto Patton Avenue with the ability to have plants and a bay window and a covered porch. And then the rear elevation, this would be, you know, access from the, from the garage. We're still trying to work out the grading to see how we can, you know, minimize the steps. So that's the facing the garage. And then this is the, the elevation facing the neighbors. And the chimney is what is the leading cause of the, the height to set vibration. This is A10. So those are the, those are the drawings. Again, you know, we've, we've tried to respect the character of the neighborhood. We're not, you know, we, we reviewed, you know, larger volumes, but we've tried to, to keep the volume as, as low as possible on the site. And again, fitting in, there's a, there's a lot larger houses down the block, but again, trying to, you know, maintain character of what's there today.
And just to, just to clarify for the board, so the addition is only something like 970 feet?
Correct.
Total additional space?
Yes.
And it brings the house still to about 2,918 feet?
Total.
Something like that? Okay.
Let me see if I understood. You, you've made the ground floor, the, the living floor such that you can take a wheelchair all around there? such that you can take a wheelchair all around there? And you have, if I understood you, essentially a simple ramp access to that level from the garage?
That is, that is what we're intending to do.
That's what you're attempting to do. And from the outside, again, you more or less have a ramp coming in to any doors?
So the, and I've been working with Vanote Harvey, Tom O'Shea's office. We're working through the grading, but the, our attempt is to be able to park the car, have a wheelchair access up and in here with no steps. So that they have the ability, and then once they're inside, this is all, no thresholds. The shower's a roll-in shower. Everything would be wheelchair accessible.
And let me ask an irrelevant but an amazing question for me. When you've designed the kitchen, have you designed it so that somebody in a wheelchair can actually do cooking in the kitchen?
That is what we've done, and there's actually a lower counter here as well.
So you've loaded the counters and you've got a proper roll under distance for people?
And we're still working through the kitchen details, but the ability to pull out cabinets so that for the wheelchair access. And there's an island here with a lower seating area so that somebody in a wheelchair could sit.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. As Richard mentioned, Tom O'Shea's here. I'm not going to bring him up because there's really no engineering issues, but if you have any questions, we certainly can have him. He's here tonight, he can answer that. Our last testimony will be our planner, so I'd like to call up Carlos Rodriguez. Wherever you're more comfortable.
Okay, very good.
Ms. Rodriguez, I need to swear you in. If you would raise your right hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Should I start with my credentials? Let's see, I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers. I've been a licensed professional planner in New Jersey for over 30 years. I've been adjunct faculty on the graduate planning program at the Bloosfield School in Rutgers. I'm sorry?
I have a job hearing you. Could you talk into the microphone?
Is it not picking? Now it's picking up?
I know it's turned on.
All right. I'm a member of the College of Fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners. And like Richard, I also served on this board for 15 years.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to start by addressing the aging in place argument that was made earlier and Princeton's policy on aging in place. It turns out that it is an explicit policy of the town of Princeton to encourage aging in place. We heard from the applicants that that is their preference, but it's also the town's preference that people do this. So if you look at the master plan, the 2017 reexamination report, it mentions under major problems and objectives relating to land development that the community has taken steps to permit residents to age in place by amending zoning to allow provision of supportive services in all residential zones. So some steps have been taken, but not, we haven't gone far enough. Princeton was the first town in New Jersey to be designated as an age-friendly community by the World Health Organization and an agency of the United Nations. And there is a Princeton Age Friendly Community Action Plan, prominently displayed on the town's website, adopted in 2016, with, which lists as important objectives under housing, offer a wide range of housing options for older residents, aging in place, and other home modification programs. Surveys consistently find that older adults want to stay in their homes and communities for as long as possible. Doing so is possible if a house is designed or modified for aging in place. The report also mentions that 77% of Princeton residents over 65 years of age live in owner-occupied housing. And it goes on to read, "Many homeowners may prefer to adapt their present homes to meet their existing or anticipated physical needs as they age." So, but while it is clear that facilitating a process for aging in place is considered an important public policy by both the planning board and the governing body, that policy has not been implemented properly with respect to the zoning. So, which brings us to the current application. The architect has already covered the various types of relief that are required here. I don't think I need to go over that and repeat it all. I would just point out that the lot, as was mentioned, is undersized by 15%. And bulk standards, if applied properly, are adjusted to actual lot size. So it's not appropriate to apply bulk standards designed for larger lots to smaller lots. This is a principle that's been recognized in Princeton with respect to the FAR, the adjusted FAR, but unfortunately has not been applied to any other bulk standards. And so it looks worse than it actually is. Now, we have a D4 variance, and then we have various C variances. And so to evaluate that, we need to meet both the positive and the negative criteria. And for the positive criteria, we have the special reasons, as you know. We've heard that the property owner, we've heard that there's a hardship case, and a C1, a C1 case has been made, and essentially by the architect. And I would support that. One can also argue that the site is deemed particularly suitable for the proposed use. Although not technically needed for a D4, I think it goes to the planning justifications for granting the variances. And then that the proposed use would advance the purposes of zoning. So if you look at, on your, at the application, on the first page, there's a diagram entitled "Area Map", which is a figure-ground representation of that part of town. And if you look at that block on which the site is located, you'll see very clearly that there is a wide diversity of conditions. Their conditions are diverse in terms of lot size. The building footprints are diverse. You have larger, smaller, attached, detached. You have a series of townhouses at one end. It's an eclectic type of land use pattern, which in fact results in the particular charm that that part of town has, which doesn't conform neatly with the zoning requirements. And that's precisely why people value it. So it's within that context and not within the cookie-cutter context of the strict zoning requirements that this application should be considered. And so I would argue that the, what's being proposed would in fact enhance the neighborhood and reinforce its character and provide for a better planning solution than a solution that conforms strictly to the requirements of the zoning, which in any event is not possible because of all the existing nonconformities that are already in place. Okay. With respect to the site suitability issue, I believe this site is particularly suitable for what's being proposed. As you know, it's located, it's an established residential neighborhood that's located at the edge of a commercial district that's served by an existing sidewalk network. And residents can easily walk to a variety of goods and services, including restaurants, the post office, a grocery store, houses of worship, and many other destinations. You're also within walking distance of transit services, walking distance from a major university that has an art museum, offers concerts, has lectures open to the public, et cetera. This is exactly the location that you want for people to be aging in place. There's an app called WalkScore that is an algorithm that measures the walkability of any location that you type into it. And this site is rated 74 out of 100, which is labeled "very walkable". Most errands can be accomplished on foot. This building that we're in now, 400 Witherspoon Street, is rates only a 59, somewhat walkable. So this aging in place concept, this is a particularly suited, suitable site to allow that to happen because of all these reasons that I've provided you. Okay. And incidentally, because of the type of land use and the type of neighborhood that you have there, you also have what's known in the literature, or the conditions for an active lifestyle, active living, which is exactly what the public health community is trying to promote desperately all over the country. As an antidote to a series of morbidities like obesity, type 2 diabetes, et cetera. Okay. Now, we believe that this application satisfies several of the purposes of the municipal land use law, namely, the first purpose, to promote the public health and the general welfare, purpose C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space, and purpose E, appropriate population densities that will contribute to the well-being of persons and neighborhoods. Equally important, it doesn't negate any of the stated purposes of the law. So in summary, the, we believe that this project meets several of the positive criteria for granting a D4 variance and the associated C variances. The sites of regularity arguably creates a hardship. The site is clearly suitable for the proposed use. It satisfies several of the purposes of the law and does not negate any stated purpose. It would enhance the neighborhood and reinforce neighborhood character. Okay, with respect to the negative criteria, we've already established that the master plan supports this concept. And so there would be, in my opinion, no damage to the master plan if this application were approved. Now, the purpose of the town zoning is to implement the master plan. And unfortunately, they're not always in perfect alignment. In some, in some cases, they're in very imperfect alignment. While the zoning has not yet been amended to better respond to these other Princeton priorities, I don't believe that granting this application would do irreparable damage to the town zoning or the zone plan. And I would also point out that the town has stated its intention to modify the zoning to facilitate this sort of thing. So perhaps if we reach into the future and do a retroactive application, you'll find the appropriate justification. So in other words, I believe that you have the legal and planning rationale for approving this application. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think that's...
Do you have other witnesses?
No, that's it for our witnesses. I mean, we're all here to answer the questions. I do want to just make one simple point, and I know you're going to open it up to the public, that we're really focusing on Francis and Fred here, but I just want to make sure that it's clear that the benefits here go far beyond this particular applicant because creating an accessible unit, something where somebody can come in and live, is something that will continue and benefit, you know, the community by creating that diversity and that housing stock. So it's both age-friendly and accessible for that first floor. That's it.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this case? Would you come to the microphone? And you have to swear to tell us the truth and who you are.
Me? I'm Arvetta Polinski. I live at 170 Prospect.
And ma'am, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey and New York. I know Carlos, I know Richard. I don't know Mrs. Zeitler, but I appreciate the idea of aging in place. And I appreciate the architect's efforts at having a fit in. But I direct my comments toward one area, which Mr. Royce said, "No runoff onto neighboring properties." This is the singular issue for me. If you look at the topographic map for this area, the whole block drains to the southeast. I'm on the south side of the block at the east end. So while you're in the northwest corner, the entire block is sloping that way. We bought our house, which is 1936, from someone that did age in place and renovated it. For the first three springs, 2015, 16, and 17, the backyard was soggy. This spring, the backyard was a lake. And what's happening as the homes that you were talking about are being built on the north side of the block are taking up more area, and it's impervious. And all that water is coming down our way. So one question is, in the 900 square feet, is there a basement there? No, I just want to explain a little more what's happening in this lovely block.
So you're concerned about water runoff from this property being augmented by the extension of the...
Mm-hmm, yes. So on that same side of the street, there is a Barisky property that increased the impervious area substantially. And that is on Lot 36 of that block. And on Lot 5 of that block, a new three-story house. My adjacent neighbor, Vera Vandeveldt, is here. They bought the lot right to the west of us and built a new home totally... They bought the lot right to the west of us and built a new home, totally complying with the zoning, not increasing the amount of area. We've worked very hard together to channel the rainwater in ways to cope. Jack West is totally aware of what's happening there, has been intervening. And one of the bright points is, the university is next door to us with the townhouses. So between the university and us, we are spending huge amounts of time and money actively regrading, putting in concrete inlets, a rain garden, and with overflow to the stormwater sewer. So while I can appreciate these big issues, with climate change, you know, I want to know, what are you doing with any increase in impervious coverage?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. De Gretse, it may be better to hear all the public comment, and then you can present Mr. O'Shea as your rebuttal.
Are there other people who wish to comment?
Yes, I am Vera Van de Veld. I live on one sixty-eight Prospect Avenue.
Ma'am, if you'd raise your hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I just want to second my neighbors' comments. We just built a house. We did everything according to the rules, impervious. We kept to all the requirements. We have a very humid back and backyard, and the basement is, we have some pumps working, cried a lot. So as Rita is, I'm quite worried about what will happen if there is more basement in the neighborhood and what will happen with the water. Will it come to my property as well? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Would you come forward as well, please?
Do you want to address those issues first?
Yeah, but the chairman has asked the board...
Okay, all right.
I'm Marie Rickman at forty-five Patton Avenue.
And ma'am, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We've been Fran's happy neighbor now for the last twenty years. We are directly next to her property. We butt right up to her garage. Fran is the kind of neighbor that you want to have. She looks out for everybody. She's never has been a nuisance to us. If anything, she's helped us in ways when we were away, or if our children... She has, all these years, she's gone out of her way to help all of her neighbors. Our neighborhood has been hit very hard by a lot of people, especially seniors leaving, and their homes being knocked down, and other things being built in their place. And we're losing all these great neighbors because as they age, because we're in old homes in our neighborhood with all these non-conforming lot lines, it is difficult to age in our neighborhood. And so, we lose all these wonderful neighbors. And I applaud that Fran is going through all these efforts to try to stay in our neighborhood. And I think it's really important that we make concessions to seniors to keep them where they are because we're the ones who lose out when they move. And once her home is livable to seniors and handicap, then going forward into the future, that's a home for others, too. So I just think that something long-term thinking is very important, and we a hundred percent support their plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
I am Scott Winters at fifty-six Princeton Avenue. We're directly to the, I guess, east side of them where...
Maybe you can pick the microphone up and speak into it.
Sir, would you, if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Scott Winters, we live on the east side of Fran, and I'd like to also voice our full support, my wife Mona is here as well, our full support for their plan. They had reviewed all the drawings with us previously, and I think aesthetically, the home is going to look great when it's done like this. I think, on the personal side, I think Marie just spoke much more eloquently about the importance of keeping Fran in the neighborhood as long as possible, and so I won't go into that as well. You know, the houses are close together where we are. We've discussed that, and we have sort of a shrub line already that starts between the houses a bit, and we've just agreed to extend that a little bit further up towards the front of the homes, just for a little bit of privacy and to knock down the sound. And I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that solution. So I'd just like to, again, fully support Fran and Fred's plan. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sherri Meyer of thirty-one Scott Lane.
You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's my pleasure to be truthful about this. My father's Fred Edelman, and my stepmother is Fran Zeitler, and I live on thirty-one Scott Lane, which is not far from this, so I can truthfully say that it's a blessing for us if we have my parents raised, like, for my parents to be able to age in place. And that, I have to say about the quality of relationships at Scott Lane, we have such a nice fabric of different ages on our block, and it's really enhanced my children growing up here in Princeton. I'd like to see more of that happen. And as I age, I think I'd like to see more of this in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people who wish to... Okay. Mr. Tony, you would apparently like to make some comments yourself about the comments that have been made.
Exactly. There were a couple concerns...
Speak into the microphone.
Yeah, there were a couple concerns raised about stormwater. So I thought I would just have my engineer sworn in and just address it because, you know, we're not going to have any negative impact, and actually, we're required to have, make it better than existing conditions in terms of the rate of runoff. But I'll have my engineer. This is Tom O'Shea from Vanode Harvey.
Mr. O'Shea, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
And he's been here testifying tons of times before, but we can go through his credentials if you like.
That's fine. Let's hear what he has to say.
Okay.
So the way that we're going to handle the stormwater for the site is, we're going to pick up the roof runoff, and we're going to either have a rain garden in the, I guess it's the northwest corner, or a dry well. We've taken a look at grades that we can accomplish that and have an overflow, and it ties into the storm sewer in Princeton Avenue at that corner. So we'll be compliant with the stormwater regulations of the town. And when Mr. Cotton was talking about the entrance to the front without steps, we have to raise the grade there, so naturally, the grade falls to the southeast, towards the garage and to the back, is, we're going to have to regrade that, so a portion of that will discharge out onto the road as well. So there's a minor increase in impervious surface. We'll be compliant with the township requirements as far as stormwater.
And you say you're going to put a dry well in. Is that going to have a pipe taking it to a storm sewer?
The overflow will be tied into the catch basin that's on Princeton Avenue right at the corner.
On Princeton Avenue?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we have other questions? I think not.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess we go into executive session at this point. Being of an age, I think it's a great idea to age in place. I'm doing it myself, but I've got steps. What are your comments and thoughts on that?
Well, I think, first of all, I think the addition is very nicely done. It works very well with the existing home. I really commend you for the concept of aging in place. I know, not your concept originally, but it's a very good one. And I really, I support this application. Thank you.
You have some comments?
No, I agree with that. I think we need to keep our seniors aging in place, and we appreciate the fact that you have put so much into this, and I totally agree.
I agree with that, but I do have a question about one of the things you said that this would transition for the future. This will be a six-bedroom house, is that correct? Aren't there two in the basement?
Yeah. Those are actually, it used to be a...
That was an apartment previously, but there's, the windows are non-compliant, and we're just going to, it's just storage space.
Okay, because it listed as...
On the plans that you have, on the updated plans that will be filed with the township for permit, it's been changed to say storage.
Okay, that's fine. That was my question. But I do like the design. I think the design for that street is terrific.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I had a question about the, it looks like there's new paved areas between the garage and the house. Are those going to be impervious material?
Right now, their plan is bluestoned, you know, again, something that's a hard surface for wheelchair access. It's part of the impervious coverage calculations, and we're still below the required allowable impervious coverage. But it is included in the calculations.
So we need to make a decision. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application with our standard lighting and...
So the exterior lighting shielded...
Light source is not visible, and...
And then we have something about water runoff.
Well, water runoff, not onto the adjacent property, but obviously, the water runoff is something that Mr. O'Shea and the architect will address.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
You'll second?
Sure.
Is there any discussion of the motion? If not, could you call the roll for us, please, Courtney?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenham?
Yes.
Mr. Valanis?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Good.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time.
Do we need a five-minute break before going into the remaining cases, or should we just go ahead? I'm fine, so, all right. So our next case is thirteen Bank Street, and it carries a case number, which is Z1818-614. I'll get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record and then ask you to make your case.
Mr. Bridger, before you begin, I'll just note the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Good evening. Anton and Francois Nellison are the owners of thirteen Bank Street, and they are seeking a D4-for-area ratio variance and a C1-bulk variances to permit the construction of a rear porch, an enclosure of an existing porch, an expansion of an attic, and exceptions to the required setback in coverage requirements. Subject property is located in the R4 zone of the former Princeton borough and subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with seventeen eighty-two fifty-three and two fifty-four. The property is located in the Bank Street Historic Zone, and it's subject to review by the Historic Preservation Review Committee. They have looked at the application. They've determined that the majority of the development is barely visible from the public right-of-way, and they've agreed to review it after this board's action for window replacement and materials, basically, so they don't really have any issues with the addition. Subject lot itself is non-compliant with respect to the required six thousand square-foot lot area. The existing lot is one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square feet. It's not complying with respect to the sixty-foot lot width. The existing is twenty-two oh six, twenty-two point oh six feet. Lot depth is non-compliant to requirements a hundred. It's sixty-two point four one. Building coverage is non-compliant to requirements thirty. The existing's forty-eight point five. The floor area ratio, the proportional floor area ratio is seventy point eight. The existing's ninety-seven. The combined side yard requirement's twenty. The existing's five point four. The smaller side yard is eight. The existing is zero. The rear yard setback is thirty-five, and the existing's thirteen point two one. The applicant is proposing to enclose the existing rear-covered porch, approximately forty-three square feet, to expand the kitchen that's located at the rear of the house. In addition, they are adding a rear attic shed dormer to the back gate of the rear, the roof gable. They are proposing three air conditioning condensers to be located in the southeast corner at the backyard, and an additional air conditioner is proposed to be located on the second floor to provide air conditioning to the addition. So the D4 variance, the max permitted is seventy point eight. The existing is ninety-nine point nine. Excuse me, I said ninety-seven, but it's actually ninety-nine point nine. And the proposed is one oh one point one six. And the bulk variances are rear yard setback to the proposed attic. The requirement is thirty-five. The attic expansion results in a thirty-foot, two-and-a-half-inch setback, so there's a variance there. The rear porch enclosure, nine point three four. The requirement is thirty-five. The smaller side yard setback on the attic addition, the requirement is eight. The proposed is three and a half. And then the rear porch, the smaller side yard, again, is eight, and the proposed is four feet eight. The combined side yard, the requirement's twenty. The attic addition will result in a combined side yard of five feet nine inches, and the rear porch will result in a combined side yard setback of ten feet four inches. Building coverage is thirty percent. The proposed is fifty-four point nine nine. And the accessory structure setback is five feet. For the air conditioners, the one on the roof will be setback very close to the setback, I guess about a half an inch, and the ones on the ground are setback ten and a half inches from the setback. And the height-to-setback ratio, three to one. The north side is four point eight, three to one, and the south side is one oh seven point six, one to one. They request a consideration under the C1 for the bulk variances. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Bridger? So would you...
And also the registered architect. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey and in New York. I'm also registered with the Order of Architects in Brussels in Belgium. I've worked...
Sir, wait. Sir, would you state your name for the record?
Zebulon Nellison.
And, Mr. Nellison, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So licensed in multiple jurisdictions. I've had about twenty-plus years' experience working on historic residential and civic buildings. Just a quick description of the property for those of you who don't know Bank Street. The property itself is located in the Bank Street Historic Zone. It was built in the turn of the century, bloom frame construction, attached, two-and-a-half story structure. My parents purchased this property in the nineteen eighties. It was in dilapidated form. It was a rooming house for college students. They've turned it, it was then converted to a two-family home, in which they rented until the mid-nineties, where they did another renovation. They lived in the house for approximately eight to ten years. In that renovation, they were able to manage to bring it up, if you refer to drawing G000, there's an image of the property as it exists currently. And in this image, the things to point out is that they were... And in this image, the things to point out is that they were, they tried, they tried everything they could to maintain the historic character, not only of the street, but of the structure when they did all these renovations. So as I, as the architect for my parents, I worked through the plans to make sure that we did not touch the facade and we maintained the building envelope as is. So I'm going to quickly walk you through the plans and what we're proposing. The first I'll show you is Plan D100. So in the interior, prior status, there was a, it was a duplex unit. It was a two-story, it was a two-family unit. The existing stairs were for a unit in the back which remained. In order to make, in order for my parents to come into this community and to live long-term in this community, we needed to clear out the entire first floor to give them maximum flexibility ultimately to age in and make adjustments if accessibility requirements were needed. Currently, they are very able and mobile, but we do have the flexibility in the design to take care of that. The demolition that's going to occur is the staircase and a portion of the rear wall to enclose the porch as Mr. Bridger described. If I can take you to drawing A100.
Mr. Nellison, do you want to make these exhibits? I realize the board has them, but that's probably a good idea.
Sure, sure. Exhibit one will be G100.
Yep.
Exhibit two will be Sheet D100. Exhibit three will be A100. So on the first floor plan, the entire proposal is ultimately to make as clean a footprint as I possibly can, avoid obstructions. If I need, if we need to, ultimately, we can put a chairlift on a single run of stairs. The entire idea is to move the set of stairs to the basement along the wall to allow them access up and down, but the intention is to keep them on two floors if possible. The kitchen is then oriented railroad the length of the building, requiring us to kind of, not requiring us, but taking the back space of the porch allows the narrow footprint of the building to be usable. It's a very narrow lot. Everything about it is existing non-conforming, so we've done everything we can to maintain the existing envelope. To take you to the next, take you back, so the exhibit four will be D101. This is the existing top floor. As Mr. Bridger describes, this was a single suite at the top floor. My parents and one of three brothers, we always come back. We always want to be with our parents, have our grandchildren come to this house. In order to have that, we want to put up a bedroom, a usable bedroom for one of us to live on the top floor. So the idea is to demolish the back wall and it's a steeply pitched roof. We're proposing a shed roof in the back as a dormer facing the backside so that we maintain historic character of the front aside. So if I could take you to drawing A101. This is the proposed layout. Still maintaining a very small footprint on the top floor and therefore allowing, you know, a suite to be built to the top floor for myself and my brothers to come visit and then keep my parents on the first two floors if possible. To address the zoning, I wanted to, well, if you guys, do you have any questions?
What are the dimensions of that top, of that top room? You know, roughly?
See, I think they're probably about 20 feet, maybe less.
20 by 20.
20 by 20, maybe, because it's less than, like, a usable square footage, under seven foot is 190, 195 square feet.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? So this time, if I could present my first witness, Carlos Rodriguez. And I'd like him to address the, the...
Still sworn in?
Well, considering you're still sworn in, I think you were qualified in the previous application, so I assume the board will again accept Mr. Rodriguez as an expert in land use planning?
I haven't lost my credentials in the last 10 minutes. Did you want me to...
You have to talk so we can hear you if you're having a discussion with them.
I'm, yes. Is this good? Is that working?
It appears to be, but you're not.
Please, can you...
If you talk away from the microphone, the spherical sound wave don't reach you.
Well, it seemed to work. Isn't it the same microphone I was using just 15 minutes ago? No? It's working? Okay, so can you please repeat the question?
I guess the question ultimately was, can you address the existing non-conforming zoning? In particular, how this structure and the addition of the structure in the back is a benefit to the, to the site and the hardships that are created by the zoning?
You know, it would be better, I'm sorry, we didn't quite rehearse this, but I think it would be better if you finished your presentation and then...
I'm done.
Oh, you're done?
I'm done.
Okay, and no questions for the architect? Then I'll pick up, okay, very good. All right, so just to reiterate, this is a request for an FAR variance of 1.26%. So everything, all the other non-conformities, and if you look at the table of non-conformities in Derek's memo, it looks like there's all, there are all these deficiencies, all these things that are wrong. Well, actually, it's what's there now and so the whole reason for us to be here is that 1.26% on the FAR. As you may have noticed, this application has many similarities with the previous application in the sense that the applicants are looking to age in place and unless you would like me to, I would not repeat all of the aging in place material that I presented to you earlier. So, but one significant difference between these two applications is that this one is located in a designated historic district, which is one block long. And as you heard, it's already been reviewed by the Historic Commission. Now, Princeton has a longstanding policy of promoting historic preservation. There are many references in the Community Master Plan, in the goals section, there's a historic preservation section, which, you know, there's, there's a historic preservation element. Obviously, there's a historic preservation community, commission. By all accounts, Princeton is a community that takes historic preservation seriously. And yet, and yet, would you be surprised if I told you that every property on Bank Street, with the possible exception of one, is non-conforming, not just as to lot size, but as to every other bulk standard as well? There are 26 properties on that block and 25 are clearly non-conforming in every possible way. And the level of non-conformity is staggering. So the zoning allowance, the zoning footprint for this property, 13 Bank Street, in other words, the footprint within which one can build within the required setbacks is two feet wide. The zoning requires setbacks on both sides of the structure, even though the structure is a two-family attached by a party wall, which has a permitted use. The permitted zoning footprint, taking into account the front and rear setbacks, is five square feet for this property. And incidentally, if there were to be a fire and that block were to burn down, we wouldn't be able to, nobody could be able to rebuild it without coming here. So I just offer that up as a background because it speaks to the need for the C2, the better alternative, the better planning solution relief. There's nothing that could be done under the zoning for that property. Unfortunately, that's not considered a hardship under the municipal land use law. Okay, so, but the arguments other than that are very similar to the other site. The site is particularly suitable for the proposed use and the proposed use would advance the purposes of zoning. So the Bank Street site is located on the other end of town from Princeton Avenue, but they share many of the common attitudes, attributes. It's an established mixed-use neighborhood at the edge of a commercial district. It has its sidewalk network that allows you to walk easily to a variety of goods and services, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The walk score for this site is 90 and the comment from the, the app is, the descriptor is "walkers paradise." You can, daily errands do not require a car. So obviously, it too is an excellent place to age in place, an excellent location. And according to this metric, it rates even higher. Let's see, in terms of the purposes of the municipal land use law, I would say that this advances the first purpose, to promote the public health and the general welfare. It would also advance Purpose C, just to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Purpose E, appropriate population densities. And Purpose J, the conservation of historic sites and districts. I've already gone over the better planning solution argument. In summary, the site is clearly suitable for the proposed use. The application satisfies several of the purposes of the law and does not negate any stated purpose. It provides a better planning solution. It, with respect to the negative criteria, it effectuates the master plan, which supports historic preservation. In this case, you're having a significant investment in upgrading a property in one of Princeton's most significant historic districts and a property that's, by the way, extremely hard to work with given how tight that block is and how narrow all those dimensions are. And again, a similar argument to the previous, even though the zoning doesn't reflect these other priorities, it's obvious that the town wants these types of projects to go forward. So I would say that on balance, the positive criteria balance over the negative criteria and that you should grant the application. Any questions?
I think that's it for us, right?
If there's no more of the questions...
We have no other witnesses.
We have no other witnesses.
I think you should release him.
Release him.
I'm out the door. Do you have any other...
I have no other.
You have no other witness? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go into executive session and discuss it among ourselves.
Very good.
The Historic Preservation Commission did send us a memo, right, saying...
Yeah, there's a, there's two memos. They did like a description of the work that they're doing, a report, and then they came to the conclusion, I think it's in your package, that they really didn't have any issues with the addition. It's very minimally visible from the public right-of-way and they didn't see any further review. They will look at the materials when they come back to that, the windows type stuff, but that's a separate item. It's bifurcated, so to speak.
I'm very comfortable with this.
You're comfortable with it?
I think it's a very, I think it's a, you know, it's a sensitive addition and it's minimal increase and I'm, I think it's a very nice solution to an interesting problem. Everybody seems to be aging in place.
You need a rope and a pulley to get up and down the steps.
Well, it's a little difficult to age in place, right.
So you have, you have an air conditioner going on the, on the back roof, do you?
We do.
Yeah, so I mean, the air conditioner in the front's going to go away on the second floor?
What it is, what we're proposing, because we're keeping historic windows, I'm using a VRF, so a split system, so they're really small condensers. I'm replacing the existing big package unit in the backyard, which is a five-ton HVAC, kind of noisy, lots of decibels, to three smaller split systems. But in order to get the distance, I have, I really have to put one upstairs to feed the dormer as opposed to feeding all the way up through the building.
Sure. No, I meant that there's one in the window.
So all those go away?
Those go away.
All those go away. That's really the intention of us to do the HVAC.
I'd be even really more facetious if that goes away, if that goes away, then it's a thumbs up for me.
Does anyone have any comments? If not, then we must be ready for a motion, one way or the other.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve?
Sure.
Okay. You have a motion to approve? Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Claudia, you want to call the parole force?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenham?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Looks exciting.
Sorry, Chair, I'd like two minutes.
Sorry?
I'd like just a two-minute break, please.
Yeah, we're going to take a two or three-minute break and then start with the remaining two cases.
How are you today?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I was late today. How are you doing?
I put a back mark against my name in my book. We get through the busy work.
Want to know the score?
What's that?
The score?
Dodgers are winning.
Dodgers are winning, one's up.
Didn't work last night.
We lost last night.
What's that?
We lost last night.
Boston's tough.
I'm rooting for the Dodgers. Let me just see him at Ebbets Field.
Like my buddy, he's seventy-two.
I remember him. Ebbets Field. Now, their apartment house.
Well, it's been a fun couple of series, that's for sure. One game's I've been watching, but it's like fifth inning, ten-thirty, I'm like, I'm dead.
Yeah, me too. I just don't like.
I love watching it, but it's just, no.
What's that? Oh, really? Oh, okay.
I know, now we're going to talk.
Okay. All right, we'll go to the penultimate case, which is 229 Terre Haune Road, with the case number Z1818-643. Mr. Bridger will give us the essence of his memorandum, and then I'll ask you to present your case.
Mr. Bridger, before you begin, I'll note that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction through the application.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening. The owners are Cosmo and Elizabeth Tomasi. The applicant is Grasso Homes. They are seeking a C1 variance, permit to construction of a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot. The lot does not meet the minimum required lot width, frontage, and lot area. Subject property is located in the R6 zone, is subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 10B 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as a right. Subject lot is not complying with respect to the lot area. The requirement's 10,890 square feet. The existing is 10,312 square feet. It's not complying with respect to lot width and lot frontage. They are both eighty-five feet, and the existing is seventy-five. The existing single-family will be demolished, and a new structure will be constructed. The applicant should advise the board as to whether they have contacted any of the adjoining landowners, inquiring if they wish to buy the subject lot or sell a portion of their lot to create a complying lot. Proposed new single-family dwelling will comply with all of the applicable bulk requirements. Again, they need lot area variance. The requirement's 10,890, which is a quarter acre. The existing is 10,312, and they need lot frontage and lot width variances. The requirement is eighty-five. The proposed for both is seventy-five, and they're seeking consideration under the C1 variance. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thank you.
Do we have questions from Mr. Bridger?
Yeah, Richard Johnson, attorney for the applicant, Grasso Homes LLC. We have two witnesses tonight. One, David Schmidt, the engineer, will just supplement Mr. Bridger's report. And we have Kenyon Hughes, a planner, who did a planning report to justify the positive criteria for the C1 variance and the lack of the negative criteria. So, without further ado, Mr. Schmidt will be sworn in accordance with the municipal land use law.
Mr. Schmidt, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt, would you give us your background, legal education, professional education?
I'm a graduate of NJIT. I've been practicing engineering for thirty-two years. I'm a licensed engineer for twenty-two years. My license is thirty-nine, four oh nine. I've been in front of this board several times, in front of the planning board, as well as in surrounding townships in this area, giving professional testimony.
And you've obviously visited the site?
I have.
And you have had the plans prepared by you or under your direction?
They have been prepared by me.
And you're familiar with the Princeton Land Use Code and the municipal land use law of state in New Jersey?
I do.
I offer him as a expert in the field of engineering. Okay. All right, so you want to give an overview of the project?
I'll just give a real brief overview. The property is 229 Terre Haune Road, Princeton, New Jersey. As Derek said, it's block 7208, lot six. It's in the R6 zone. I have a exhibit, which is the same plan that was issued to the planning board members and to the planning department. It is a variance plan prepared for lot six, block 7208, dated August 5th, 2018, and it was prepared by my, my office. I can mark it as Exhibit A1 if you'd like, but it is part of the submission package.
Just say here, Terre Haune's on the below part of the sheet. We are seeking a, the variances that Derek said. We're seeking a lot area variance, lot width variance, lot frontage variance. The numbers and the dimensions of all are correct through Derek's testimony. We do have a planner, and they're gonna re-site those, those areas, so I don't want to do it for three times. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-and-a-half-story, single-family home on the property. The existing split-level house is going to be demolished. The proposed new dwelling will have one car garage, sufficient space below, behind the garage, to have two parking spots, and it's with, outside the setback area, so it conforms with the ordinance. We are not proposing any stormwater management for this project, as we're decreasing the impervious surface coverage by 991 square feet. So, per your ordinance, we do not need to provide any dry wells or stormwater management as we're decreasing the impervious surface coverage, so there's not a increase in stormwater runoff. We are placing the house basically in the same location as the existing split-level house. The drainage patterns are going to remain the same, so we don't need to put in any dry wells, because the water is still running from the north and south of the property. So, we're basically keeping the drainage patterns that currently exist the same. No discharge is going to adjacent properties, which has always been the concern of the township. We are seeking a C1 variance, but for lot area, lot frontage, and lot width, but all other lot zoning requirements are met. Lot depth?
All of the setbacks and height.
That's correct. Lot depth is 137.5, and...
So, it's a lot size, aren't you?
It's just lot size and lot width. All the other bulk requirements are met. We have a front yard setback. The ordinance is twenty-five. We're setting the house back thirty-six feet, and the prevailing setback is 31.4, so we're performing in that regards. Lot depth, I went over already, Richard, is, lot depth is 137.5 feet, and we're, the requirement is eighty-five, so we meet the lot depth requirement. Rear building setback is 59.5. The requirement is fifteen, so we meet that. Right side building setback of the building is 16.8 on either side. The house is centered in the lot, where the requirement is fifteen feet. There's sufficient space in the front yard setback, so a car can be parked outside, behind the, the other garage, and also added a little space so they can do a turnaround and exit to Terre Haune front face. The building height is 29 feet, eleven and a half inches. The ordinance requirement is thirty feet, so we meet that requirement. Proposed dwelling is being located in the same location as the previous dwelling, thus no ecological, environmental change to the property. Impervious surface coverage will be reduced, so the drainage patterns are the same. The existing property is currently served by public sewer, public water, gas, electric, and a local telephone. The proposed dwelling will access the same utilities. We basically cut off the utilities when we demoed the house and reutilized these existing service connections, if they are in good condition. Residential garbage, we collect it by curbside pickup on a weekly basis. So, basically, as we said, we're asking for lot area and lot width and lot frontage, and all the bulk requirements are met. As far as our engineering view, I think we meet all the requirements from engineering and, and planning, but we have planning testimony from our planner to, to further substantiate my case.
That's it for Mr. Schmidt.
That's the only person you're bringing as a witness?
No, I'm bringing in a planner.
Sorry?
I said, I'm bringing in a planner.
Oh.
To, he did a planning report on the positive criteria for the C1, lacking a negative criteria for the C1.
Okay.
He's just giving the engineering. He supplemented Mr. Bridger's report about drainage and the fact that all the other bulks specifically are being met. The house is basically in the same area as the current house, and in fact, some of the setbacks are better than what the current house is, as far as space.
Okay.
This is Kenyon Hughes, a planner. Would you swear him in, please?
Mr. Hughes, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
You want to give your qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm a principal of Phillips Price, a planning firm based in Hoboken, and I have a master's degree in the field of planning from Pratt, and I've testified, been accepted as an expert by over eighty municipalities in the state.
I submit he's an expert in the planning. You did a report for the applicant. You want to just tell us what your scope of your work and a description of the subject property, proposed development, zoning compliance, the justification for the C1 variances?
Yeah, I think I can be fairly brief this evening. It's a, from a planning perspective, a fairly straightforward case. I did visit the property, reviewed the application, but we're really just asking for three variances related to pre-existing conditions. So, this lot exists, the lot area, the lot width, they're not changing. These are pre-existing conditions. So, the variances that are being requested here can be justified on a C1 basis. There's really no reasonable means to bring this property into conformity. It's a fully developed, single-family neighborhood, including both neighboring properties, so this lot will continue to exist as it does today. Thus, compliance with the ordinance places an undue hardship on the applicant. So, in that way, we can satisfy the positive criteria for the three variances that we're requesting. As for the negative criteria, the most significant factor here is that the proposed house is fully conforming to the ordinance. So, FAR, setbacks, building height, it's all conforming. And in fact, we're actually gonna be able to reduce impervious coverage on the property. So, in that sense, it's an improvement upon existing conditions, which furthers the general welfare. We're even gonna be able to retain the existing significant tree within the front yard. So, the overall massing and setback of the house will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and for those reasons, there's no substantial detriment to the public good in reference to the negative criteria. And as for the zone plan, as I noted, the applicant is unable to bring the property into compliance with area width and frontage requirements. So, it's really a classic hardship basis for the variance request. The house is otherwise conforming. The deviation from minimum lot area is really de minimis in terms of the, the square footage that we're short. So, there's no substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance or master plan of the community. So, in conclusion, the positive and the negative criteria are met for the lot area, lot width, and lot frontage, C1 variances that's being requested by the applicant this evening. With that, I don't have any further direct testimony.
The massing and setback of the house will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood that you took a look at?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have for Mr. Hughes. Questions? Comments?
Good. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case? Seeing none, I guess we go into executive session. Standard lot size. What say you?
I think it's... I think it's pretty, you know, straightforward. Other cases we've heard, it's interesting that we got the draft ordinance on neighborhood character that it'll get introduced. That, that'll get introduced, the neighborhood character draft ordinance, and it'll be interesting to see if it passes in future projects of this developer, because neighborhood character study was somewhat prompted by, in part, the design of garages ahead of the side and whatnot, but it's not in place now.
Okay.
The, there's a schedule on your plans. I'll read it to you. The schedule says...
Build the house is usually four to six months. Build a house. We submitted to the soil conservation already. We should have their approval from the SCS. It'll be, yeah, November 6th, so they'll be approved, so we're ready to submit for building permit.
Yeah, there's a sequence of construction on the variance plan, and it goes through week one, week two, week three, week four to six, week seven to twenty, week twenty to twenty-one, week twenty-two. And then we have to construct the house.
Okay. Do we, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the...
Can I put my exterior lighting and...
Exterior lighting and approval of any drainage with Mr. West.
Okay.
Can we be assured that the project will go forward and not somehow get derailed? There are properties that have been approved in the last few years that are just sitting...
Well, my client is Rick Grasso, and we've been in front of this board. We're moving pretty well. They're, they start and they move on, and that's the business. I've been working for Mr. Grasso and his dad for, for thirty years now, so it's been the process of get the approval, move, and sell, so we're not gonna sit on this.
And I agree. I've been working with Mr. Grasso and his father for forty-one, forty-one years. They move. They have a lot of money invested so far with the planner, me, Mr. Schmidt, had to do a survey. Title search has been done, it's good, so just a matter of getting the resolution memorialization done by Ms. Casey, have it adopted, waiting for the forty-five days on the Rule Four, Call on Sixty-Nine, no appeals, which probably it won't be, and we just apply for a demo permit and move on.
I have a question. What about removal of any mature trees?
No trees. There's only, actually, there's very limited trees on the property, which is one in the front, so that's being preserved with the center fence that we put around it, so.
And there'll be some plannings, foundation plannings to enhance the quality of the project. Okay, I think we have a motion. Do we have a second to the-
Second.
Did I hear a cry of second?
You heard a cry of second.
Good. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Could you call her all then, for us?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tendamon?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Thank you. All right, so our last case is two-nine-three Riverside Drive, and it carries the case number Z one-eight-one-eight dash six-three-eight. You finally going to get a chance to talk? So I'll get Mr. Bridger to read his memorandum and the record, and then-
Thank you.
Mr. Bridger, before you start, I'll just note, noticing is in order, board has jurisdiction.
Everything's in order, is that right? Good.
Good evening. Melinda Brashna is the owner and applicant of two-nine-three Riverside. They're seeking C-one and C-two variance relief to permit construction of a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot, which does not meet the required lot area. It's in the R-five zone, subject to the use and bulk regulations with sections ten B two-five-three, two-five-five and two-four-six of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The lot is non-compliant. The required lot area is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet, or a half acre, and the existing is twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven point nine square feet. The existing single-family house that's there now complies with all the applicable bulk regulations. The existing single-family house will be demolished, new will be constructed. The applicant should advise the board if there's available land from adjacent landowners to purchase to make it a complying lot. The applicant indicates that the new single-family house will comply with all the applicable bulk regulations, although they do not have the plans at this time. I just want to note that the applicant recently purchased this property, insulted the municipal tax map prior to purchasing it, and the tax map indicated that the lot was a complying lot of point five-three-two acres. However, once upon an act, once an actual survey was completed, it was determined that the lot was undersized. That's the reason for the applicant's appearance here tonight before this board. So requirement's twenty-one thousand seven eighty, the existing is twenty-nine seven six, seven point nine, and they have requested consideration under both the C-one and the C-two. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you. We appear to have no questions. So do you want to tell us what you want to do? One of you?
Thank you. My name is Derek Brosna.
And will swear and you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
My wife, Melinda, and I bought the property, hoping to build a home on it, you know, for our family, and like Mr. Bridger's mentioned, you know, we had consulted the tax map before we went to purchase the property, thinking that it was a, you know, conforming lot, and when we got the survey after the sale, something was wrong. Apparently, all of the lot line measurements are accurate with the tax map, but the calculation that was done from those dimensions was incorrect. So, because the survey came back and it matches the exact same thing that the town has, but for some reason, there was either a transcription or a calculation error. So, you know, and we talked to the engineer that did the site plan for us, for the application. He's, he's familiar with the original company that did that survey way back when, when the, when the property was, you know, subdivided back in the fifties, and he said, they're really good at what they do, but, you know, it happens sometimes, so.
Not multiple.
Not much we can do about that, I guess, at this point. So, I mean, that's really it. We're, you know, we talked about, we're trying to, you know, build a home, and it's really it. We don't know if you guys have any questions for us?
Mr. Brusino, the property surrounding you, are they developed, single-family homes?
Yeah, they're all developed, single-family homes, you know, an existing neighborhood. It's not any, anything other than homes on the street, so. And I, and we did walk around and talk to all the neighbors a couple of months back, when we found out that this would be the case, and asked if there was anything they could help us with, and they said, not really. I mean, you know, you got to go for a variance for it, so it's really, really the story.
So my understanding is what you're going to build will have all the right setbacks and so on?
Yeah, so we-
But it's just a lot size?
Purely a lot size, yeah. We, we met with a couple architects, just to tell them what we were interested in doing, and they said that, you know, based on our conversations, that they can meet all of the existing regulations that are required to stay within those, you know, sizes. They said there's, there's no reason that we wouldn't be able to accomplish that.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Bridger, is this a one-off? Is this the only one that's like this, or is the whole neighborhood like that?
In my seventeen years here, it's the only time I've seen this happen, but it does happen. It's, I've seen surveys, I'll see two surveys on one property, and they're different sometimes, so it does happen sometimes, unfortunately.
But it's not the whole, it's not the whole development?
No.
It's just this one property?
Seems to be, yeah.
And, and, you know, I know you guys asked about a question before about timing. Talk to my wife, but we're, we're ready.
So when you, when they have a plan, they would present it to you or to, how would, what would be the next step?
Well, they'd have to go through the whole engineering requirements before they apply to zoning. They'd have to get tree permits for any trees that would be taken down. They'd have a stormwater management plan that would be reviewed by the municipal land use engineer, and then I would review it for zoning, and then it would go to building, and they would review all the applicable building codes.
Can, can anyone foresee, I guess there could be a reason that they might have to come back, but it would only be if they go beyond the requirements, right?
Correct.
Yeah, there, there, on the property, there are no trees that we would affect, as one thing. There's nothing in the area of construction, and, I mean, like I said, we're gonna, we're not, we're not trying to go outside of any requirements that you guys have, so in terms of construction, but, I mean, the only one that I guess we'd have to submit to you guys is what, impervious coverage or something like that, that would be, yeah, an engineering plan. And the person that did the submittal for us on this would be the engineer that we would use, and that's Princeton Junction Engineers, who've done a lot of work with you guys before.
You didn't, Derek, this is, I guess, a question for both of you. The, the adjoining properties are all adequate? I mean, you, you didn't try to acquire nine hundred square feet or whatever you need to make this conforming from any of your neighbors, did you?
I went, I mean, I went around to them, but our, the exact adjoining properties don't have that area to give to us, so.
So they can't, so it's impractical to do it?
Yeah, they're impractical. I mean, some of our houses are too close to the lines as it is, so if we were to take property from them, they would be not conforming.
Okay. Think we know all we are ever going to know?
Anybody in the hall, let's go home. Anybody in the public room say something?
Sorry?
Anybody in the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are people in the audience wishing to speak to this? I see no signs there. So then, we're in executive session.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve? Yeah, I'll second that. And a second to the motion. And I want to add my exterior lighting thing, no lights that can be seen from neighboring property, no lights village over your property line.
Yeah, and what we form to whatever apartment.
Yeah, it's a standard thing that I feel strongly about. And then the, the issue of drainage and runoff is also there, but the engineer will take care of that in principle. Okay, so, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second, and so we can vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tendamon? Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you.
Now you can all get in, please.
Thank you, he's ready.
Okay.
Deemed complete, so. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Could ask next time to jump the order.